Parkway for the new food pantry building.
So move, or second rather.
Okay, thank you. I would make one correction. It's now 107 North Alpine Parkway.
Okay.
That's what Mr. Rao told me last week. It'll be a new address, not the same as the church.
Sounds good.
Okay. Anybody wish?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think we have some folks in the audience who would like to present. So if you guys want to come up and give the spiel, they just did the spiel. It was a Thursday night at the planning committee meeting. And it was, it was a very good spiel, so.
Very good spiel.
Try to top it.
My name is Jason May. I'm the pastor of Peoples Church. Very excited about this project. We've been working with the Oregon Community Resource Network and the Food Pantry Board. And many members of our congregation. This fits right in with the mission and vision of our church. It, I think is going to be a huge asset to the community. Moving from being a storage bin, storage shed, which was graciously donated by Ed Hefty, to this community-built food pantry building. The church will be leasing the land for $1 for just $1 a year. These terms are for 25 years. The lease, I know the food pantry, the trustees approved it unanimously last week. It is sitting with the Food Pantry Board tonight for their last go-over. Then it needs to go in front of our church council and a full church vote. And I'm very confident that, from everybody I've talked to in the church, that they're fully behind it. We've talked about it with the Ecumenical Clergy Group. And we are committed to this being a community-based food pantry, not Peoples Church. Food pantry and every pastor and lead person I've spoken to in these meetings are very excited to partner with the Food Pantry, the Oregon Community Resource Network. What else do I have to say? Probably not much. Dan has probably all the details that you want, so I'll turn it over to him.
Thanks, Jason. Hi, Dan, and welcome. Welcome, Jeff.
Thank you. Jeff, Billy the guy, he was the architect of the project. I'm Dan Berber, Supreme Structures. Equally excited about this. One member of OCRN one time made a comment, "This is like the United Way of Oregon, Wisconsin." And I'm excited about the project. We, as a general contractor, are basically donating. From the start, getting through the pricing, ink on exchange, and pretty much gonna try to get this thing built next to nothing for the village and OCRN and the food pantry. We've had, this is the first time I've had a lot of subcontractors locally that have stepped forward and said, "What can we do? How do we, how do we put our heart and soul into this project?" Which is kind of exciting, seeing everyone in the village kind of coming towards our end goal. So, Jeff?
Hello. Hi. What we're proposing is like a 4,300 square foot facility, which would be over here. It'd be located in the northeast quarter of Methodist Church property. It's a one-story slab-on-grade building. It's gonna have about a 600 square foot community room in there with some bathrooms. And then the other part will be the food pantry area, which will have shopping area, freezers, coolers, and then storage room in the back. We brought some material samples that we showed the planning board. If anybody's got any questions on that, the shingle colors are down below. The building is gonna have Wayne's Coating all the way around of a split-faced material. And the siding will either be an LP siding or a Smith fiberboard like this. So we're trying to get everybody in town to work on it. Everybody's donating their time and efforts for this.
Great. Are there questions from the board? We've heard this before, but I would like to personally thank both of you for all the work you've put in. I know there's been a huge amount of hours you've both done behind the scenes, and that's appreciated by the board and by the village. And also to Randy Glaser sitting back there. I'm surprised he's not out raising money, but... We're working on the next project for him. So are there questions? Okay, seeing none, we have the motion second to approve the conditional use permit and agreement for 107 North Alpine Parkway for the new food pantry building. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And I'll abstain, Peggy. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Okay, that takes us to item 3B under Public Appearances, which is a review of South Perry Parkway sidewalk feasibility study and Wolf Street sidewalk feasibility study. There's a motion here. We'll go into this once we've had our presentation, so, welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm Andrew Burt. If I haven't introduced myself, I'm out of the Madison office of Rooker and Milky. I conducted the sidewalk feasibility studies that I'll review here tonight, along with the help of Mr. Rao and input from other village staff as well. So what I'm gonna do tonight in brief, and if you do have further questions, we can, we can cover that after my brief review of the highlights of the study. And there are hard copies of the study available as well, that if somebody wants to take a look at those. But, like I said, wanted to touch on some of the highlights of the studies. The first one I'm gonna cover is the Wolf Street sidewalk feasibility study report. The purpose primarily of this, of this study is really connecting the Foxborough Drive area in the Foxborough Estates subdivision with the Oregon Middle School. Ride a safe, safe route for pedestrian traffic, as you well know, getting primarily across Wolf Street and up to, so a connection to the, to the middle school. Right now, just a quick review of the existing sidewalks in the area. Of course, there is sidewalk in Fox Run Court. There's not sidewalk along Fox, Foxborough Drive. There is an extension of sidewalk here in the villages of Foxborough subdivision that ends here at this property line. And then there is on the west, I'll look at that. Then on the west side of Wolf Street. On the west side of Wolf Street, there is some existing sidewalk up here right across from the Concord Drive street. And then lastly, there is sidewalk on both sides of Pleasant Oak Drive, which ultimately leads to the, to the middle school. So again, just to review, the scope of the project was really to provide a safe pedestrian pathway from this particular area to be able to get to the middle school. So, alternative one was quite simply extending sidewalk from Fox Run Court down Fox, Foxborough Drive, crossing Wolf Street to the west side of Fox, Wolf Street, and then heading north up Wolf Street to Pleasant Oak Drive. Alternative two, very similar at the start, extending sidewalk on Foxborough Drive, but then instead of crossing Wolf Street at that location, turn and go straight north on the east side of Wolf Street up to a point directly across from existing sidewalk on Pleasant Oak Drive on the north side there, and then making our crossing of Wolf Street at that location. And then lastly, alternative 2A, we talked, we called it, was really that same route, but instead of stopping at that location, it was an extension from there all the way up to the existing sidewalk at, at the existing extension there at the villages of Foxborough. So those were the, primarily the three alternatives that we studied. Looked at a number of criteria. A summary of the costs for each of these. If I can refer to my sheet here. And these are, these are total project costs. So including design, engineering, surveying, permitting, all those sorts of things. Alternative one that I talked about is approximately $69,000. Alternative two, which was Foxborough Drive on the east side of Wolf Street to this point, was $127,000. And then extending that sidewalk further to the north up to the villages of Foxborough was an additional $77,000. So with that, our recommendation to the, to the board would be to recommend alternative one. Weighing all the factors in terms of impact to the environment, permitting, and of course, costs. Alternative one is, is the, the most attractive alternative that we, that we would recommend. And again, at a cost of approximately $69,000. As part of the study, maybe you noticed, we did look at alternative funding mechanisms. And the one we, we did look at initially, but determined that it was not a good fit for this particular project in terms of their criteria to be eligible for the, for a low-interest loan or a combination grant program would be the Safe for Houses School Program that's through the DOT. But that particular program, again, in terms of the eligibility requirements did not meet, this project would not meet that. So with that, that's kind of hitting some of the highlights. If anybody has any questions on that, that study?
Jeff, do you have any comments on this study?
Yeah, this came about, obviously, some concern of residents and everything brought to our attention. The, the lack of kind of connectivity that we had between Fox Run Estates and kind of the Pleasant Oak middle school area there. And we do have a couple places in the village, and these are two tonight that were highlighted, where we have some, some issues. That, you know, kind of the, that was kind of the impetus of this and starting this. And then, so, you know, we've taken it to the next step to kind of look at, from a feasibility analysis, these, these possible routes. And then kind of a, I'd call it a capital planning level, cost estimating for, for what we would have to face. You know, we have not had any accidents. You know, it's not like we're responding to something serious that's happened out there, and we're very thankful of that. I think some of it is with the route not being there. I, I would imagine kids aren't using that route. They're probably being driven to school and everything. You know, so, so what's this, you know, from, from the board's standpoint, you see the recommendations to kind of send this to Public Works Committee. And I don't think that's a bad idea, but I, kind of, I wanna, I guess, like to kind of get an idea of a read from the board tonight as far as the direction that you'd like to see, you know, this moving ahead. And if, and if it's something, because I think the Public Works Committee's gonna be looking for, you know, do we want to put this on as a five-year plan, capital improvement? Or is this something that we want, we want to focus on and look at funding in the next couple of years? One of the things that does kind of play into this, especially along Wolf Street, is Wolf Street is not our road. We, that's a, that's a county highway, and it's also not part of the original, or the memorandum of understanding that we signed with the village, or the county this last year. So as far as long-term improvements on Wolf Street, that's really not on the county's radar, and it's not on our radar right now. The other concern we have, obviously, is once, if you can get the children down to Pleasant Oak, getting them across the intersection there can be, I think, a little scary, too. It's kind of a little bit similar to our intersection that we have at Alpine and Jefferson Street, where it's very wide. And we've seen some good success with the flashing beacons out there at the, at the crosswalk. And I think that's what we would be recommending at that location. But it still doesn't create the safety as like a signal would. But honestly, I think a signal is still quite a ways out at that point, because it's not warranted at this point. And, and there has not been that safety concern, or the safety issues that have happened out there. So I guess I'd be looking for any kind of feedback as we take this kind of to the next steps.
I, Jerry, I have a comment, or actually a question for Jeff. Is there a lot of pedestrian traffic going up to the middle school on Wolf Street?
We haven't gone out and done any counts. I can only go off of what I've seen throughout the years. A lot of kids kind of cut through that field on the other side, kind of over where the greenhouse is, and then cut through that field, and then they'll go along either side along the roadway. I've witnessed that, and actually, I've run that route numerous times, and it's not, it's one we used to avoid, because it just had, there was no off-street good route along there. But I couldn't give you an exact number of kids going back and forth. Jeff, I don't know if, you know, I know this was brought forth as a concern from the homeowners association. Have you, do you have any idea of like, number of kids we're talking about, or?
So we've got, we've got about 32 homeowners that live on, on that whole Fox Run Court and then Foxboro Drive section. Partly, the homeowners currently walk or ride their bike along the highway to get to Jefferson Street, Janesville Street, sorry.
Yep.
Which is our connection, our connection to the village, in terms of if we want to go to QuickTrip, in terms of if we want to go to headquarters. And then if we're biking, in terms of if we want to ultimately get to the bike path and head out.
Correct.
That's not safe. You know, my wife and I do it, but, you know, cars are going 55 miles an hour, and you're on the shoulder of the road. So I think that was part of the concern. The other part of the concern, of course, is the middle school. And as I just click through the Foxborough Drive end of things, we've got four young girls next door to a brother and a sister, so that's six. I got one to my left, I got an infant to my left. Two, two doors down from there, another infant across the way. So within a few, you know, eight years, nine years, we'll have a fair amount of elementary school kids and probably half again as many middle school kids. And ultimately, it's, it's a neighborhood, like any other neighborhood. It's just isolated. Since we were annexed by the village, we've been isolated from the village.
Correct. And we do provide all the services over there for the village as far as, including plowing and the water and sewer and everything like that. So we can, we can resoundingly say that you're part of the village.
Oh, yeah.
Exactly. Welcome. But, yeah, I would agree. I think, I think it's a safety, it is a safety issue along that stretch there. And that's, I mean, that's why we're talking about it.
Well, Jeff, is there, is there a bus route that conveys children from that oasis over there? I'll call it an oasis, that part of the village over to the...
I'm not sure what route is over there, but I would, I would almost say absolutely.
So there is...
We have to cover, we cover everything in the village.
There is a bus ride available if you choose to use it.
Not for middle school kids.
Not for middle school.
Middle school's too close.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was my question.
Yeah. Elementary and high school would qualify there, but not middle school.
All right.
But over there, I know, I've gone to pick up my grandchildren from the middle school, and I'll tell you, at the time they're let out of school, there's kids walking, there's, there's cars, there's, you know, multiple cars, and it's really very unsafe over there.
I happened to be at work at the middle school on Friday, and there were three kids that did the exact thing that we fear the most. They were darting between tra, between cars to get across the street to go to Foxborough area. So it's only three kids, but it's telling evidence that the kids are not safety-conscious as much as they should be, perhaps.
Exactly.
I think Chief can probably speak to the issues with regards to speed coming over that hill.
Yeah, well, if they're going 55, then we got a big issue, so. I will say, looking at this alternative one, I know it's a less expensive option, but crossing over Wolf Street where you have it there, I'm a little concerned, because that doesn't leave a whole lot of room coming over that hill for people to stop and see if you're gonna put flashing beacons there. So I'm a little concerned about that. And then you're having to cross Pleasant Oak there as well. You know, at some point, I know there's a crosswalk further west of there that could be used, but that's a long walk. They gotta kind of walk over and then come back, and then walk back again, so. Those are two things I have right now, that just kind of pop out of my head on, on the concerns for that. I kind of like the other alternative, although it's more that crosses down lower.
Turn it to.
Yeah. That puts a sidewalk on the east side of the road and then crosses over further down towards the middle school. But I think that was another $60,000 or something.
Yeah, um, thanks, Brian. The, you mentioned the speed limit there coming over the hill. Part of that alternative, and the, and the other one, quite honestly, was recommending to, a couple of things. One, move the, the speed limit sign that is just south of there, move that further to the south. And then also supplement that sign with a reduced speed limit ahead sign, you know, for even, yeah, further to the south.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a county process, and we don't know how long that's gonna take.
Yeah, it'd be working, it'd be working with them, and they, and they were, you know, we, we, they were contacted. We did coordinate with them. They're aware of the, you know, what we're doing.
I like that. I mean, we need to reduce the speed limit along there anyway, so.
I could have that sign moved by tomorrow morning.
Legally? Yeah.
Thanks for correcting me on the speed. Darlene made the comment, "It's 35." It's amazing how fast 35 feels when you're six feet tall looking in the windshield of a car coming at you, but...
Right, right. That's why I said if they were going 55, we got a problem down there, so.
But I do know that your officers like to park right there on the corner, because people coming over the hill tend to, tend to put their line of sight on the traffic lights.
They do.
As opposed to the fact that they should be at 35 miles an hour there.
Yeah. Well, I had a middle schooler there last year, and I, you know, I know coming out of there in vehicular traffic is very difficult just to get out of that intersection, so. You know, we, we do all we can to slow them down, but it, it takes a lot.
You know, I think this is gonna be a problem area, no matter what we do. I mean, you could put sidewalks everywhere, but you can't make people use them. You know, if, it was a long time ago, but I remember being that age. You're gonna take the shortest possible route possible. Again, I guess we have to do our due diligence and provide a safe passage, or the safest possible passage. But my final question, or two questions. Number one, is that your desired route, Jeff?
I, I would prefer the route, I would actually prefer the route that is on the east side of the roadway. I believe that's alternative two. And then continuing that down into the, into the village. I mean, we, we had them actually add alternative 2A, I believe it's called, just because we felt that, you know, while we're doing this, part of that is, is to take that connection further. Because there are a whole, I mean, there's a whole nother set of the village that you go down Concord Drive and go around. It is Concord Drive, past headquarters and all that area, like Elliott Lane and, and some of the new townhomes that have been built in the last couple of years. There's no access along, you know, Wolf on either side there. Ideal world, we'd have a sidewalk on both sides. If we were looking at a reconstruction with Dane County at this time of that roadway, we'd be talking to them about incorporating sidewalks on both sides of that road all the way out there. But that's not, you know, it's just not in the books right now.
I know that's, Rob, Chief just mentioned.
Yeah.
And to your comments, you know, they're gonna take the easiest, fastest way there. They're not gonna go all the way up at that intersection and kind of cross, so.
That's my point. I mean, we can spend this money. And again, we have a duty to provide a safe route. It doesn't mean that they're gonna use them, you know. When school gets out, you just want to go home, you know.
Yep.
Quantifying safety improvements is always very challenging. Because if you wait till it's too late, when there's been something that's happened, or an accident, or someone hurt, or, you know, heaven forbid, killed, you know, what, what value do you put on, you know, that injury or life? Whereas, you know, it takes an investment to, to improve this type of stuff. And it takes, as we said, you know, anywhere from, this could easily be, on the, on the very low end, $70,000, on the very high end, $200,000 if we continue it all the way into the QuickTrip area. And we have improvement, you know, we have projects, like we prioritize every year as far as what we consider to be something that needs to be put into a capital improvement plan. And sometimes we move those schedules based on the priority of what people perceive needs to be done.
Well, you know, something else to consider is that prior to the annexation of Foxborough Drive and Fox Run Court into the village, those homeowners weren't paying the village taxes, but they are now. And they have children, and they have a desire to be connected to the village. And I think that has to weigh, it's not necessarily going to resonate with people that don't live there. But we're talking about 100, well, we're talking about 32 tax-paying homeowners just in that area. Now you add in the condominiums that were built, like you said, around Concord Drive, and you've got another group of taxpayers that are part of the village that deserve to have a safe access point to the school. Whether the kids use it or don't use it is an important, it's an important issue, I think, to be taken on by the parents and by the school. And I, I don't disagree with Jerry. I, I know kids are going to do what kids are going to do, but there's a difference between kids doing what they're going to do because there isn't a safe access route, and kids doing what they're going to do in spite of the fact that there is a safe access route. So I think Jerry makes some really good points, and I would just, I would just add those thoughts to Jerry's point.
So I would, I would recommend, now, maybe Andrew takes some time and kind of go over the other study that was, that for the South Perry Parkway, because I think a lot of things are gonna resonate very similar across both ways. And you kind of recap what you did for the, we call it the South Perry Parkway sidewalk study.
Before we move on, was there anybody in the audience that wanted to speak? Did you want to speak? And I don't mean President State, and I don't mean to jump the gun, but...
No, that's, I was gonna ask too, Jeff, so, no, that's fine. If you'd like to come up the table and get a microphone. And welcome.
Thank you. Hello, my name, my name is Jennifer Boss, and I'm a resident at 859 Fox Run Court. My backyard is pretty much just about right across from the intersection, a little bit to the south. And I do not have a middle schooler at this point. My kids have graduated. I will tell you, as a safety, it is a safety issue as a parent. I probably have done what other parents have done. You take your middle schooler out there the first day of seventh grade, and you teach them the flow of traffic, you teach them the point at where they should cross, what they should be looking for. So we had our son cross south of the intersection, always looking for that occasional car that takes that right-hand turn heading south. That's kind of how that plays out every year for those parents that have that first-year middle schooler. So we definitely are concerned. And looking at both of the alternatives, I actually prefer the alternative one west side, and I'll explain why. It was fortunate, it was a lower cost. I was looking at the lanes of traffic that are next to the sidewalk. So if you're actually on the west side and you're headed toward the middle school, you only have that one lane of traffic on your right. As opposed to the other side, on the east side, you're walking. On the left side, you have two lanes of traffic. The reason this concerns me is because, as a homeowner, hearing those horns hawk of drivers, this is an odd, of drivers that are not paying attention, quickly swerving, because that left-hand turn, somebody's making that left-hand turn, quickly swerving to the right, overshooting. And you can see the tire tracks on the side, sometime even partway into the ditch. Witness, I don't, I actually didn't witness, I heard and then witnessed, because I saw the aftermath about a year ago, so it should be somewhere, an accident that did happen, and that truck ended up in the ditch. So that's really a big concern. The trees that may be needed to be, be removed actually is gonna impact, not only the, the sound barrier will go away. The trees that may be needed to be, um, be removed, actually it's gonna impact, not only the, the sound barrier will go away, the house value is not gonna be as great, and also safety barrier. So when you have a car that has an accident, you have a backyard with families, that's where they're spending their time. Those trees could be that safety barrier from that potential accident that could happen. So that's why I would support the alternative one on the west side for those reasons.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Jeff.
Anyone else on this? Otherwise, we'll, we'll go to the other side of town. Andrew? So now we're on South Perry Parkway.
Yes, as Jeff had mentioned, let me switch up the. Very much the same purpose of this particular study, providing a safe access or a connection from, from this particular area, the Hillview, I think it's Hillview Heights area here over to just getting in this particular area which, which students and family and so forth can either access the school coming up Union Road or continue down westerly on South Perry Parkway. Again, to review, just like we did before, and maybe you're familiar with, there is existing sidewalk on both sides of South Perry Parkway, from Main Street to the east and from Union Road to the west. And then between those two, there is, there's existing sidewalk that's on the south side of South Perry Parkway. Likewise, on South Main Street, the only existing sidewalk is located on the east side of South Main Street. Until you get up to, as you go further north up to Thiersted Lane, that is where the, the existing sidewalk basically ends at that point. So again, the purpose of the study, connect, make that connection point from this particular area over to here for a safe passage to the, to the school, the intermediate school. Discussing, discussing this particular project with Jeff, we determined, basically there's two basic alternatives. Alternative one is simply making the extension of sidewalk on the north side of South Perry Parkway between Union Road and South Main Street. Then secondarily, alternative two would basically extend that alternative on the west side of South Main Street from South Perry Parkway. Up to a point roughly in this neighborhood, this did not extend further north on the west side, all the way up to Thiersted. Talking with Jeff and as you, as you are all aware, in this area just north of there, there's, there's a couple of different issues, just some drainage concerns as well as the railroad right-of-way is there. So purposes of this study, we stopped alternative two here. The extension of that sidewalk would most likely be addressed during a future road reconstruction of South Main Street from where we left off this year. So those are the two alternatives. And in some, you know, summary again with the costs of, of those two. Alternative one is in the range of sixty-seven to seventy-two thousand dollars. And Jeff, do you think, should we kinda cover the, kinda the sub options there within?
Well, I think, I would just, I would just address a little bit of why, I think, we can talk a little bit about why we don't have a sidewalk there right now.
Yeah, so, right now, there's, as you can see on the exhibit here, there's an existing storm basin. It's not meant to be a wet basin or detention basin, it's just a large opening really in the, in your storm sewer system where storm sewers enter in at the corner of South Park, South Perry Parkway. And as well, there's a, there's another culvert pipe that discharges coming here on the, on the southwest corner of that storm basin. If you've driven along here, it's, it's, it's a feature that is, is very noticeable. Basically, you get off the street, both on South Perry Parkway and on South Main Street, and the grade drops off pretty quickly from the road. And so, right now, there's just, you know, a topographic issue, I guess, with not allowing the sidewalk to easily be constructed in that particular area, and most likely is the, you know, the, the driving reason for not having a sidewalk there. There is also of note, there's the Wisconsin Southern Railroad. And with that, with the crossing of that, there's, there's also some concerns primarily with the railroad. But we did talk with them about this particular project and it actually, it actually, if, if that alternative were to be pursued, it's a fairly easy process in terms of them, it doesn't have to go through a full, full review. So the storm basin is the primary, the primary reason why that sidewalk is currently not, not there. With alternative one and why I said there's a range of costs, we did look at, along the storm basin here, there's kinda three different ways in which we could get a sidewalk installed in there. One was adding a fair amount of, of fill material, basically to give, give us more room, essentially a flatter platform on top near the road where we could have five-foot terrace space from the edge of the back of the sidewalk, then a five-foot sidewalk and then a two-foot safety area, if you will, before it slopes down to the basin. Another option was bringing the sidewalk a little bit closer to the back of curb. I think it was three feet, maintaining the five-foot sidewalk and then shorting that, that safety or that buffer area, shorting that to a foot, but at the same time installing like a, a handrail basically. Just to, just to aid in, in, in keeping people on the sidewalk and if they do have a need, there is a, there is a handrail there. Then lastly, the third kinda sub option with that alternative was, again, keeping the sidewalk three feet from back of curb. But instead of the, the, the fill material, there'd be the construction of a retaining wall with, again, that same handrail installed on the top of the retaining wall. So we did look at those three, that's the, that's hence the range and the cost. The, the cheapest cost is just adding the fill material. It, it also has the benefit of moving the sidewalk the furthest away from the back of the curb. The second cost, most, most cost-effective solution actually was the, I believe, the installation of the retaining wall. And then lastly was the, the combination of handrail along with the, the fill material. So that was alternative one and the, and the kinda the options on, you know, alternative one. Alternative two, extending that sidewalk on the west side of Main Street, that cost.
Can I just ask you a quick question?
Sure.
With regard to the fill material, to what extent is the purchase of the fill material weighing in on the cost?
The, I used a, a, a cost that we've seen as a, as a pretty common cost for, for fill material on construction projects. And actually determine an approximate volume of fill that we would need and use, and use those unit prices that, that we've seen in, in recent construction projects.
And do you remember off the top of your head what percentage of the project that took up?
I'm on it.
Yeah, Jeff would have the detailed.
It's about, about ten percent.
And then is there special requirements for fill material? Does it have to meet certain requirements?
Yeah, the, the actual material itself, there'd be some, some special requirements. It needs to be a, a material that we can place compact and it can, and it can have the, you know, the supporting, or essentially be able to compact it in place so it will maintain the stability of that slope.
So can it be earth or does it have to be rock?
No, it can be, it can be earth. It just all kinda depends on the material. There, there is a range of material that could be used. We wouldn't wanna use topsoil, that would just simply be used as a top dressing to then establish vegetation. It could be a combination. We, we would generally want either a, a a well-graded granular material that could have, you know, a range of, of sizes of, of granular material. Or potentially could even be a material, I would say, on the, on the clay-type side, which can be placed and, and compacted very well also.
So I was thinking about the earth that we have over off of.
Yep.
Jefferson?
Off of Netherwood.
Sorry, Netherwood.
Yep, and there's actually another source that became apparent to us over the last couple of days. And to answer your question, Jeff, and actually, it's funny because I kinda anticipated that question too as well. And I think it's a great point. You know, since we're not putting anything structural out here, you know, that, that kinda lowers the quality that we would be required, you know, to have out there as far as fill. But, but Andy's exactly right, we're not gonna put a whole bunch of gummy clay out there. And we're also not gonna put a bunch of topsoil out there, so it, it doesn't have to come across as structural fill, but kinda has to be, like you said, just something that's gonna be stable after it's, you know, compacted and put in place. But I, yeah, we kinda were thinking about that too. It's, you know, out of the seventy thousand, the amount of fill was about seven thousand dollars, so it's right at about ten percent.
Thank you. Thanks for letting me interrupt you, Andy.
No, that's, that's fine, Jeff. Alternative two, on the west side of South Main Street, that was an additional about sixty-five thousand dollars to extend that sidewalk on that side of the street. Not quite to the extent as, as along South Perry Parkway, but along Main Street, there is, you know, we are budding up against the east side of the storm basin. So there is some amount of fill material that would be required for that, but, but not nearly the same situation that we're, we're dealing with here. Not to mention the slopes that come off of the road to the bottom of the basin. We could, we could definitely make those a much safer, manageable slope for, if somebody needed to, to enter as well as for maintenance purposes. So there would not be, not be a handrail or anything like that that we, you know, propose on that side. So, again, I guess getting to the recommendations with, with this particular project, our feeling is alternative one for sure is, is a recommended alternate in filling the, the, some exist, in filling sidewalk on the north side of South Perry Parkway. Likewise, along with that alternate, I think in discussing with Jeff, I think our, our feeling would be to go with the option one at the storm basin, which is the, moving the sidewalk furthest from the back of curb, using the, the structural fill material to provide that safe platform, along with no, you know, along with no handrail. Another reason, I guess, part to, to go into that alternative, there was some discussion on, you know, you don't often have this opportunity, but there is some recreational aspects to this, this option. I'm sure this, this basin is used quite often as a, as a sled hill by a lot of the kids. And that was part of the discussion on, you know, it's going, it, it would remain so, even if we put in the sidewalk there. And so we'd wanna maximize that, you know, that level of safety, I guess, with providing that sidewalk. So I went into the, the idea of moving the sidewalk furthest away from the road, adding the fill, which you could even with, since we are adding fill, you can do things that, you know, grading-wise would prevent, you know, potential, potential issues with the culvert pipes that are sticking out. You know, we can provide some, some grading that would, that would, you know, deflect the, the kids that are sledding down the hill, just keep them, keep them in the, in the location that we'd wanna, that we'd want them to sled, so. And again, looked at same, looked at alternate funding mechanisms, same, same as before. The only one would be the DOTs, Safe Roads to School. But this, this particular project, again, does not meet the, meet the eligibility requirements for that, for that combination grant and share, you know, cost-share program. So with that, I'll open that up to discussions.
Okay.
Again, this, this, actually, this was kinda the first, this would just be project one that was brought to all of our attention, kinda concerning safety and the fact that we don't have a sidewalk on that side along. That area actually is known, according to our, our grass cutters and the public works, they call that the Superbowl. And, and it, and it is, is a very challenging place to mow and everything like that. We don't send, obviously, kids on their first day out there to mow that, but, you know, I'm always amazed at the amount of kids that sled out there. And right now, if you go out there, there really is, it's, you got the back of curb and then you have maybe about a one-to-two-foot small flat spot and then off. And when it's plowed, all that goes to pile up there and I don't know how many times I've seen kids in that area, right on that edge, you know, sliding down there, and it's not that long of a hill, that's what I don't get. You know, we have really nice sledding hills in other parts of the village, but I think it's just centrally located there and it's a place that kids can build ramps and that kinda stuff. So from that, safety is, is an important thing and that's where I'm, I'm really supportive of trying to create a terrace of about five feet before you even get to the sidewalk that allows for snow storage, gets the kids well off of the area. That's kind of secondary all over for the safety here. The, the primary is the safety of the kids coming from the neighborhood over there, east of South Main Street and, and then needing to come across there. I found, again, we don't have any kind of significant injury history here or anything like that, or any kind of major police reports that I'm familiar with, other than we know that, you know, the most direct route would likely be the safest route along here. I lost my train of thought on TV. Can you put up a screen or something like that? But, oh, I know what it was. What was interesting is I happened to be going through an archive box the other day and this was purely random, needle-in-a haystack type of thing. I opened the box and the very first folder I look at says, "South Perry Parkway Sidewalk Analysis." And back in two thousand and one, this was actually part of a capital improvement plan concept. I kinda, I made, I asked a few questions and I found that, that had been looked at and, and by the way, very close to what you guys came up with, so, you know, nice job on that and everything. But the decision at that time was, is the kids have a perfectly safe route to go to the other side of the street and that's the way it was signed. Now, the problem is, is kids just don't follow that that much. I mean, I've seen kids walking along the north side of the, of South Perry Parkway. They come down from the middle school, they continue across Union and then they just keep going across the grass and then either go out into the street. Again, it's, it's one of those things is, you know, most direct route and everything like that. The reason it really, the reason a sidewalk has never really been put in here is strictly the cost. And, and, and Andy's, you know, hit on it exactly. We're talking about a slope there, we're talking about fill. It's a construction effort, it's gonna cost more money than just putting in a sidewalk. And, and I think it's just always been one of those things as far as there's other, been other places in the village where we've committed funds to, whether roadways or whatever else. I think that's a much higher priority than looking at the sidewalk, what we call is alternative two, going down South Main Street. We already do service everything on that side, on the, on the east side of South Main Street. I think it's nice, it finishes it off if we wanna have a sidewalk on both sides of the street, but fiscally, there's really no, there's no really reason for us to have to look, you know, consider alternative two for that. But I think we could, I think we could make it a nice improvement over there, I think with some fill. We would be able to ease, ease out that slope a little bit. And I think it'll still, like you said, it'll still be used for, for kids and sledding and stuff like that. I wanna make little troughs where they could go, but I don't think it's long enough to really create any kinda toboggan course or anything.
Yeah, I just wanna add to something you've said twice now with regards to, we haven't had a problem yet. So up in Sun Prairie, on Grand Avenue, which was Highway C, got built out pretty quickly with houses on both sides and that was part of the development plan all along, but, you know, like any development plan, private developers go in there and they build businesses and then all of a sudden you've got houses and. But, you know, like any development plan, private developers go in there and they build businesses, and then all of a sudden you've got houses, and now you've got people. And there was a really busy intersection up there that people were talking about. It got, even got in the paper about how busy that intersection was. It was a four-way intersection. People were crossing to get to the gas station, crossing to go home. And we should do something about that. But I think there's actually a state formula for how many people have to die before they recommend improvements into the roadway. And it's kind of morose to think about that, but, but it exists. And in that particular intersection, there was an elderly lady traveling southbound who decided to turn left to go to Quick Trip and hit a motorcyclist, and he died. And now we have stoplights. And I would hate to be the person that sat on the city board debating whether or not safety features were important, to your point, tonight. And I'm not trying to be dramatic, because I think we should make intellectual decisions about the way that we grow and the way that we spend money. But there is a, there is a component here that, that sort of hides underneath a lot of our discussions, which is if it isn't an issue, why are we dealing with it? And I think that there are some safety issues, and there are some growth issues. You know, we've talked a lot about other issues that, that come into play when you're growing a village. And, and there is this balance of proactivity and reactivity that I think has to be struck. And when you can make a safety case, I probably tend to lean more to the proactivity side of that equation than the reactivity side of that equation.
Exactly.
I just have a question. Okay. This would be the sidewalk Prairie Parkway, just where the grass is now, where the, the slide hills. That, that would be the only sidewalk that you're going to do?
That would be my recommendation.
Yeah. And that, to me, I think is right, because I live over in that area. Because the other, on South Main Street, you don't see a lot of kids walking down there where there's no sidewalk.
Not on the west side.
They can walk across the street, and then they can follow South Main downtown. And I would be very much approval of that.
Like Andrew was saying, is, you know, the problem is, is it necks down to where we barely even have room for the curb over there. And that's actually historically, and I don't want to date you, darling, but that's the way the road used to go under that trestle back there, way before this was ever developed. And so if you look on the old maps, that's, that was part of South Main Street. Came up, went under the trestle and went under there.
That's when we came to town, yep.
And so, yeah, so there really is not a sidewalk on that. That's the reason we don't have the sidewalk. And we have that major drainage channel along there, so.
Yeah. I think that you see lots of kids walking on that grass. I mean, lots.
Yes.
Any further questions for Andrew or discussion?
No, I just have a question for Jeff in anticipation of both these projects getting approved, or at least one of them. Is there money in the seventeen budget for this?
No. Not in our budget. And that's where anything that, I guess what we, we would seek a recommendation from the, from the Public Works Committee, I believe is where we're, yeah, Public Works Committee, that it would, you know, be part of an upcoming capital improvement, which I think we can add it as a capital improvement. I think the, the direction would be is what priority needs wants to be put on this. And so obviously, you know, this isn't part of twenty seventeen construction project. We're way behind the ball on that if that were the case. But, you know, if the committee and the board wished we could add this to the twenty eighteen capital improvement and, and borrow for that money. You know, we have a lot of borrowing coming up, so this all kind of just goes into the equation, I think.
Okay, let me ask first, Dave, you brought this forward. Did you want to say anything tonight, or have we covered it to your satisfaction? You brought this project to our attention, so.
Yeah.
But if you'll need, want to talk, you'll need to come to a microphone, please. So the TV picks up.
Dave's out there sledding every other day.
Hi, I'm Dave Franks in eight seventy-five Hillcrest Lane, Oregon, Wisconsin. Actually, I'm in the town of Oregon, not the village, just to clarify that. But I brought this forward. I've had three kids that came through the school system. Actually, my oldest daughter was in the first class at the new RCI Intermediate School, and I actually served on the site council to get the school up and running when our, after RCI, well, during, when it was built, and then during the implementation during the first school year. But I always said, someday, it just seems like when I have some time, I'm going to actually put some things together. And, and actually, I, I saw that sidewalk issue as a safety issue, and I saw that what the village wanted the kids to do is there's, I don't know if you've seen that, but there's a sign there. When they go one block from, from RCI heading, heading, what direction is that? I don't know.
East.
East, heading east. You know, there's a sign there that says, "Do not walk on this side of the street. Please cross the street. Go down the next block and cross back." And I'm like, these are the two, two busy intersections, not the two busiest, but they're two busy, very busy intersections, especially when it's right before school or right after school. And I just thought, I really wanted to put some time together to, to bring a proposal forward, to have something done, and have the sidewalk done on the other side of the street. And I realized that, you know, it's part village, part town, as far as the tracks there, but that didn't seem to bother having the sidewalk on the other side of the street, either the tracks or the fact that there's village and township property. And I just, each of the three options on there are basically sixty thousand dollars. With soft costs, they're each about seventy thousand dollars. I mean, not including the, the Main Street aspect of it. And Jeff and I have talked and about it, and the fact that the option one with the fill leaves the sledding hill there, moves the sidewalk away from there, does not have a building of a retaining wall or use of handrails. I mean, it just seems like a great option to me. And I, I would hope that you'd move forward on the, on the project, and I thank you for your time.
Okay. And thanks for bringing it to our attention. Appreciate it. Okay, so any further questions for Andrew or discussion on this? So if not, we're ready for a motion as recommended by staff to, the motion would be to refer these studies to the next Public Works Committee meeting on March twenty-seventh. Anyone wish to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And just to review again, as Jeff said, this is not part of our two thousand and seventeen budget. That was done a long time ago. This would be, we'd look at with our capital improvement plan and would tie into borrowing as far as where these things stand as far as priorities, so.
And then would Public Works also make a recommendation as to the urgency?
The Public Works Committee, I think, should.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll be part of that discussion.
Okay.
Yeah. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, most curious. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. Appreciate your thoroughness and presentation. Okay, that takes us to item three C, Downtown Dumpster License Agreement. Item one is review of February sixth Business Owners Meeting by Dan Donahue. And again, we appreciate you organizing this meeting, Dan, and moving on this. As a note, that our attorney, Matt Dregney, has not prepared an agreement yet because we're kind of starting over here again. And then there's, will be board discussion and possible action. So you're on, Dan. Welcome.
Excuse me. All right, Dan Donahue, owner of The Chocolate Caper at one oh five South Main Street. I did want to start, I don't think it got said last time, and I did want to thank the board and the village for letting us use the dumpster space, because I think that's an important thing to recognize, and that, that didn't get brought up last time, is you are letting us use your property for our businesses, and we do really appreciate it, speaking both on myself, on my behalf, and the behalf of all the other business owners. So we met, I either met with everyone this morning, or I met with them previously to figure things out, just in terms of how we're going to split things up, how we're going to get disposal taken care of, how we're going to police it. So the village doesn't have to deal with getting, you know, bothering us to get it cleaned up or anything like that. I'm not sure if we'll be ready to take action today. I mean, what we came to, what we've kind of decided on is the current capacity is sufficient for us at this time with the users that will be using it, which is an eight-yard dumpster and an eight-yard recycling bin emptied once a week. We have talked about moving that up to, as we grow and as garbage grows, we'll, we'll change that to two times a week when we hit the threshold that that needs to happen. The issues we're running into, none of the companies offer spraying services or any sort of order control services anymore. And I know that's an issue in the agreement. I don't know if it's something that can be worded more as a reasonable efforts will be taken to, to mitigate any odors or rodent issues that arise out of use. I'm just struggling with all the, I've talked to Advanced Disposal Waste Management and Pelletary, and nobody offers any sort of spraying service and things like that. Pelletary or Waste Management, one of them said they had some pellets they could throw in. They did not sound optimistic about how well they worked. But I, that's an area I, I know very little about. In terms of parties to the agreement, it will be The Chocolate Caper, Holstein Kitchen, Charlie's on Main, Scott McWilliams, or SL Mac LLC, and his tenants, Ace's Main Tap. And I'm ninety percent sure Ziggy's. I still have to touch base with them because they weren't able to make the meeting this morning. We have talked, and we would like, one thing the current agreement prohibits is locking the corral, and we would like permission to lock it. We have had a number of issues lately with people not, who are not supposed to be using the dumpsters, using them to get rid of everything from TVs to clothes to all sorts of stuff that we know is not coming from the restaurants or from us. We have a TV back there right now that we're trying to figure out how to get rid of safely. So we would like to put a combination lock on, on the corral and permission to do that, so that we can share the combination lock. We know lots of people will have the combination, including probably some people we don't want to have it, but it'll at least be a step in preventing people from just showing up and being able to get in and dump. We're going to start trying. The, the plan and thought is that we'll try to police it ourselves by signing a different business as responsible for two months of the year. And we'll rotate through who's policing it, keeping it clean, who the contact person is, and all that kind of thing. And it looks like we're going to go with Pelletary. We've gotten the best rates from them, pretty much. And everyone I have spoken to about the different companies recommends Pelletary for their service and everything they do. One thing they did offer in terms of controlling smell, if it becomes an issue, was one option was to go to a two times a week emptying option to, so things aren't sitting as long. The other was they'd replace it with a new dumpster every year. So we'd always have a relatively fresh dumpster that hadn't been sitting and stagnating for years and years. So that's, and then we figured out that, I need to confirm that Ziggy's is going to be participating, but if so, I think the percentages are going to be split twenty percent for the restaurants, ten percent for the Chocolate Caper. No, I'm sorry, fifteen, well, fifteen percent for The Chocolate Caper and five percent for Scott McWilliams. And then five percent is going to be taken off The Chocolate Caper with one percent added to each of the other ones to cover administration of the contracts and all that kind of fun stuff, because nobody wants to do this. And nobody wants to talk about this, but we have to. So we're very aware of that. We don't want to talk about it any more than anyone else does. So we just, that's right. We are all in favor of an automatic renewing agreement, so we don't have to revisit this every year. We're all in favor for our, on our side of paying quarterly or yearly at a time, so we're not bugging people for checks every month. And then just locking things in. And the, the thing I need to still figure out for the agreement we're writing between us is how we're going to deal with a business closing or someone getting added on, and how we're going to figure out how to recalculate everything when that happens. But we just met this morning, and I already have some ideas on how to write that up, so. So we should have an agreement with us out on the table within a week or so. That's my hope at least. I'm drafting it, so fingers crossed. And if there's blue all over my face, I apologize. My pen exploded when I took it out of my bag, and I think it's mostly on my hands.
It's red.
Is it all? Try not to get more on. So that's what happened at the meeting. And I am happy to answer any questions or.
Okay. So I know Matt will want to weigh in. But any questions over here first?
Well, I just want to make a statement. I want to thank you very much for the work that you've done to, to coordinate everybody on this issue, and I'm really impressed with what you've come back with. So thank you.
Oh, thank you.
I would second that. Thanks. We appreciate it. Matt?
My only comment is, I just put the project on hold.
Sure.
You know, obviously, you guys are kind of regrouping. So once you are ready, you know, and I agreed to, to do a draft agreement at no cost, and that's, I'll still do that. Just need to hear, like, once you have kind of your plan together and you're ready to move to that.
Then I can email you the final version.
Send me all your details, and then I'll, I'll try and take it to the next step in terms of getting our agreement, the village's agreement with, with you all done. And I guess the only, I don't, I think what we'll do is, as we work together, we'll try and figure out how to deal with issues like like this spraying and the locking. I don't remember why locking was not allowed, but.
Well, I know, like, it had been done before with keys, and then there were issues with people getting into it, I think, at some point, but that's about all I know.
I mean, my sense is that if you guys want to lock it, I don't think the village would have a concern with that. If you're locked.
And we'd give you the combination, obviously, so you could get in if you needed to.
So when you're ready, send me your information, call me, whatever. We'll, we'll keep going.
All right. And the one question I had was whether you just had any thoughts as to whether it would be easier to deal with this if we formed, I'm not sure what the legal entity would be, some sort of association that just signed the agreement with the village as one party, and the association represents all the businesses, or if it's better to have all the businesses just individually signed?
Well, I mean, from my perspective, drafting an agreement for the village, if we're just contracting with one association, that might be easier. But again, I'm not really sure, and then, and that might present its own set of complications. So, I mean, I have a draft where I was just going to try and plug in who the
What the name is.
end users are.
Okay.
So the complication is, you know, it's easy with everyone here on the list except for Scott McWilliams, I think, because who are the end users under the Scott McWilliams heading who get to actually?
Right, for him, it's Scott McWilliams and tenants.
So I just need to break that into the component pieces.
Okay.
So, because I want us all to know who has a right to actually use the facility.
Right.
So, yeah, I, once you're, once you guys are together on your plan, let me know, and we'll move ahead, unless the board wants to make any further adjustments. But if that's okay with you all, it's okay with.
Okay, that way? Okay.
All right, so I'll get that to you. This week being Valentine's Day, I might be a bit swamped, but
That's no excuse.
Next week. But at least by next week, I'll be able to start getting everything put together, and then I'll send you a copy of everything.
Good. Next job. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you get your wife chocolates?
I wish I could, but I, I've thought about it, but I think I would just get hit. Because she'd be like, "Thank you for giving me something that I made." Yeah, I've lost some of the easy gifts, too.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go to item D, Discussion with Jerry and Bonnie Thiel. We're getting Outstanding Finances with the Village. This is tabled at a previous meeting, so if you want to come forward and give us background. And we'll look at this as background. We do go to closed session at the end to talk about direction we want to go. So this will just be informational, any questions that we have regarding information. So welcome. Go ahead.
Thanks. Thanks for rescheduling this.
Sure.
It was good. And I guess I just have to say, we sure appreciate Dan's youth and enthusiasm.
Yeah.
Yeah. It put it in, in the correct direction, I guess, I would say.
Yeah.
So, anyway. Yeah, so I guess we're just looking at this as kind of a bookkeeping, housekeeping cleanup right now. I, I don't have any desire, and I don't think anybody does, to rehash history. We already did that once.
Yeah.
You know, so, and yes, it was a time ago when the, when the work was done on those properties. But the good thing about this, what I thought about it today was that, I guess, waiting this long has proven that the work that was done was successful. You know, so, so now, yeah, so it is good. Yeah, so now I guess everybody's able to say that, yeah, we're, you know, we, we're pleased with it. We can say we don't have any further claims or issues with it. And I think my, my email was clear about what we were hopefully simply saying that could be exchanged in this process. And I only said that, you know, that we wouldn't pursue an appeal of the double permit fee on one thirty-five South Main Street. And I said that because I know that in any agreement that an attorney most likely will draw up, he would want to have that language in there. So it wasn't meant as a, we're going to come back and, and discuss that again either, because the interest, you know, is now just to move forward with any or whatever projects that we pursue. I guess, you know, if there's any questions.
Okay.
Just so that I can understand exactly what we're discussing, going through the email, traffic back and forth. So then what would happen would be that you would pay the village the one thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars and forty-six cents, and that the village would pay you the two thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty cents?
Correct.
And, and then we would close the, close the entire. And, and then we would close the, close the entire...
Correct.
...issue?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments?
I just have a comment, separate from my question. And that is, I just want to thank you both. I think in the, in the short term, I want to thank you for the, for the way that you brought this project to the village and to the village's attention, because without you being in the basement and saying we have an issue, we would have potentially a couple more buildings implode over time. And it's not always the most pleasant thing to have to try to work through a fix and try to figure out how we got to where we got to, but I think you both did it very gracefully, and I appreciate that. And the second thing is I just want to take this opportunity again to thank you and Jerry for the investment that you've made in Oregon. I firmly believe without your vision and without the private investment that you've made, that we would have a very different downtown, I know that we would have a very different downtown Oregon right now. And, and the things that you've brought to Oregon in terms of Holsteins and Ziggy's and in terms of the remodeling and the improvements and the functioning Mason's Building and Charlie's, those are things that are really important to the vibrancy of downtown Oregon and the future growth of the village. So thank you both very much.
Thank you for saying that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are my comments.
Anything else, questions, comments here? Okay, I think we're set for our next thing at the end.
So you're going to do this in closed session? Will you let us know tomorrow then? So...
Mr. Grace is out right now for a couple days, so what do you see as a timeline on that, Matt?
Or not necessarily tomorrow, but via email as opposed to us waiting, or...
Yeah, I'm just trying to see if Matt can give an idea as to when we could get back with an email on where we are.
I mean, I'm sure we could, by Wednesday?
By Wednesday or Thursday, I think.
Okay, sounds like by Thursday at the latest.
All right, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to item four, approval minutes are number four tonight. We then will go to vouchers. It's like Lisa went on a shopping spree. We have a total of $7,790,697.31.
Oh, move approval. I'll second.
Thank you. Questions?
Jerry, you disappoint me.
I, you know, these are so, Lisa's gotten, gotten these, so they're so straightforward, now I can't come up with anything.
On page four?
There we go. Thanks, Doug.
Doug stepping in.
Is the Machovitz claim work, is your legal work on that issue done?
Oh, on the Makavich? The, the, the work that's being done going forward is going to be covered by the, well, I think we have the insurance company now on board with covering legal fees going forward. So there, I think as far as fees that the village will have to pay, I think that's behind us.
Thank you.
What, what costs are going forward? I'm not aware of some of the forward debt.
Yeah, so he, you may recall that Patrick Makavich filed a notice of claim with the village.
Oh, yeah.
And so that the, that matter's been tendered to the insurance carrier, they've assigned defense counsel, and that's Ted Woskowski, and he'll actually be meeting with you on February thirteenth in closed session to provide his analysis of the claim and make, and give you his recommendation regarding what you should do with the claim. And that, so his work is being paid for by the insurance carrier.
I see.
There was a little work that I did just to transition it from, from me to the insurance company essentially, so.
Okay, thanks, Matt.
Thanks.
Other questions on vouchers? So we have vouchers before us, an amount of $7,790,697.31. Roll call, please.
Karen Haller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rudyard?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes, that carries. Takes us to item six, committee input. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board tonight? Seeing none, we will go to item seven, proclamations and announcements. Any board comments?
February twentieth, Ben Venudos in Pittsburgh is having a dine-out for the Oregon Community Resource Network food pantry construction. If you go, when you go, if you go, and you tell them that you're dining out for OCRN, twenty percent of what you spend will come back to the project.
So are you taking us all there?
Yes.
We don't have a meeting that night, so we're...
Yeah, Mike might want to post that.
But I tried.
Yeah, well, you'll find us there, for sure.
Any other board? You're out of order.
This whole court is out of order.
Any other board comments? See, now we'll go to staff comments. Mike has a listing of meetings there. Please be sure, note, we need, we meet next Monday for a board meeting as opposed to twentieth because of the primary election on the twenty-first, and this room is tied up, so just note that change. So we'll be back here then, and then, then the other dates that are coming up there. Item two, there's a park board. We have a vacancy for an alternate member on the park board. If anybody's watching is interested, you can contact Mr. Grace for more information and a very short application. And then item three, Peggy?
Well, can I put a hand out at your, at your spot there? Every election, well, I shouldn't say that, maybe I shouldn't go as far as to say every election, but most elections, we will get people calling in asking about election signs, and we are looking at this as a proactive way to take care of that. Jeff?
Yeah, we just, we have a new sign ordinance, and I think it's very, as we roll this, continue to roll this out, our, our goal is to be able to disseminate as much information as possible so that people are, are following it. We've seen great reaction from the public when we've given them this information, and I think this is, we're just trying to be proactive ahead of the two, well, we have three elections?
Two this year.
We have two elections this year. Just we're proactive ahead of that. I think this kind of at least gives them some basic information and points us to, points them also to the full code if they need to be.
Yeah, it seems like the main thing is that signs cannot go between the curb and the sidewalk.
Correct. Always, always using the signs on private property with owner's consent, and then really just as far as the type of signs, which are yard signs typically are the, which are the two-by-three-foot signs not exceeding four feet height. And thirty days prior and two days following an election, you're allowed basically an unlimited number of those on a private property place with permission.
Okay.
So I know in the past, we've allowed a six-foot, is it six-foot by four-foot, or six-foot by five-foot sign for elections?
I'm not familiar with that exactly, that doesn't sound familiar, but...
But it's off the table in any event. Simply the two-by-three-foot yard signs is, that's it.
Correct. Unless, yes, unless there, there are, there are other things that can be worked out depending on whether the zoning, zoning of a parcel, of a private parcel, whether it's commercial or business. What we ask is politicians or people writing for office, if they have any question whatsoever, it's always just a very quick phone call to us to say, "This is what I like to do, this is where I have permission to place it, are there any problems?" So that we'd be happy to just give them a, even give them a call back and let them know, you know, what our code says about that.
Okay.
Is there a restriction on size? I, Jeff brought that up, I don't know.
Yes, on yard signs, there, there's a two-foot by three-foot size, that's a six-square-foot maximum per sign.
Okay. Other questions on signs for elections? Okay. That takes us to item four. This looks like, Jeff, you're on for the large tree removal of Jefferson Street?
Yes, yes, thank you very much. Actually, this is just kind of as an FYI, there's a very large, large Baroque tree if you're going down Jefferson Street, right at Baroque, or South Baroque Crossing. It's at a private residence at 339 Jefferson Street. We've been contacted by a tree service that would like to be able to take that down. Their feeling is they have to have the road closed for a short period of time, approximately four hours. We're working with the tree service on this, and Dane County Highway, just to make sure that all the permits are filed and everything. They're planning on probably trying to do it during a Sunday morning when traffic will be very low, and then we'll be notifying residents of that happening and possibly putting out our, our mobile sign for a few days beforehand so that people can know that it's closed. Our plan would be to divert people onto Walnut Street, which is a very short, just out and around type of thing.
And would you sign for that?
Yes, yeah, there'll be, there'll be, we'll, we'll provide barricades. We've, we've talked to the landowner, the land, it's having to be removed at the landowner's cost, so we've been trying to support them in what ways we can. And the tree is a dead and dying tree. It's been looked at by a couple armarists, and, you know, if you, if you don't know which one I'm talking about, if you drive down there, you'll know exactly which one I'm talking about, because it's a beautiful tree, it's just...
Yeah, it's a great old tree, it's a shame to see it go.
Yeah, I have been told by the, the residents, though, that they're talking with the wood cycle, and if it's a solid tree, that those, those type of trees are sawn into slabs and some really neat tables that can be built out from it. That's all on the private end of things, but it's always nice to know when it's being repurposed.
Okay. So that takes us to item A, communication miscellaneous business. Item A, library information, and item one, library director, Nikki, your monthly report, please.
Yes, thank you.
Welcome.
And I want to say again how much I appreciate the opportunity to share with you some of the information about what's going on at the library in the Spanio. So this report from last month starts by basically covering what is for us a very important part of our year, which is filing our annual report with the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction. We need to turn this in annually, and it's very important that we get as accurate as information as possible that we place in this. It helps us track our progress as a library over time, how we're serving the public, and allows us to compare our library and its peers, with its peers across Wisconsin, and also, very importantly, it helps determine the funding we are to receive the following year from Dane as well as adjacent counties. So we are looking forward to having that in on time later this month. We are nearing the end of our library's current four-year strategic plan, which wraps up in 2017, and I'm happy to report that when I go through that strategic plan and look at all the different goals, objectives, and activities outlined within that, I see that we're doing very well in meeting, meeting those goals and objectives. You have the, the large umbrella goals listed for you in this report, so I'm, I'm not going to read those all to you now. Of course, there's always continued work in these areas, but I think we should be very proud of what we have accomplished. And as you know, we are gearing up for our, working on our next strategic plan, and I want to thank you all for, as well as those members of the chamber who participated last week in a community conversation, which was an effort to begin reaching out to different constituencies in the community to get as close of a feel as we can as to what people want for this, for our Oregon, and how we might use that in moving ahead, use that information in moving ahead. So we do have our next discussion planned, and this is our first true community conversation. The first two, as part of this plan process, focused on particular population groups, educators, and those identified as local leaders. This one will be open to the public and is scheduled for February 22nd. It will start at 5:00 PM, and it'll, and it's, we have the Village Hall Community Room here booked for that event. Now, we will have a form up in the next day or two on our website that will allow people to register in advance. We do ask that people register for this event. We would like to have a group of about twenty for this, and that will also allow us to plan for how many future conversations we need to arrange, what the demand is for this. And if you are interested in or know of someone who might want to contribute to a discussion about what we want for Oregon, I would look forward to having you register and join us for that conversation. There'll be more information on the library's website on that.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then, now it's time for our information about the library. So on the second page of the report, I wanted to give a little bit of background on what the library board has been up to. They've established some committees in 2016 in an effort to try to streamline their, the monthly library board process. As you know, sometimes meetings can get very long, and there's many details that need to be covered, and so they started to break things out a little bit into some subcommittees for, to allow for an opportunity for more in-depth discussion, then they would summarize that information and bring it back to the library board for action. So that's, that's the thought behind this. And the committees that were begun officially, we have a building committee which was created in 2016, and it's really very much a first step and a placekeeper. The purpose of the committee is to assist with all aspects of the process of facilitating the building of a library, with a particular emphasis on roles of evaluating, analyzing, questioning, contributing to the overall vision, process, and outcomes of what a new library might be. There have been just a couple meetings, and the only action that I would say that came out of these, and all the minutes are on the library's website, the only action that came out of that was to basically give the library management team the okay to work with cell central library system and beginning to break down the numbers on what the likely growth of the collection is in, in the coming years, so that we're able to share that information. And as you can see, there's also, part of the creation of that committee, we're, the hope is very much for it to have a broad representation on it, including citizen members, village board representation, cell central library system, village administrator, et cetera, all the different parties that might come together eventually to help the process along, to give some vision and direction. And happily, it also meets one of our objectives for our current strategic plan, which is to appoint a committee to explore options for expanding the current library or building a new library facility. So it helps us meet that goal as well, so that we are, we're moving ahead in our visioning. We began a finance committee in August, that's an ad hoc committee that recommends policy and planning, which maintain and improve the financial health and integrity of the library. So we're trying to plan for a successful future and make sure that we have some best practices in place. And then a fundraising committee was discussed, but was never made official. There's no real action on that end. Any questions?
Questions, anyone? Okay, again, thanks, Nikki, for keeping us up to date on the library.
Yeah.
Which takes us to item 88-2, which is Mike's memorandum on the library fund balance and fund 203. And basically, that's just reaffirming that the village board at budget time gives a set amount of money to the library, and we can hear what that is. Once they have that, they have full control over how that gets spent. If they have some left, they can put it into a fund balance and build it up to the twenty-five to thirty-five percent level if they'd like to, like we have required for the village board, so...
Reflective of the overall village policy.
Does that catch that all right?
Yeah, I think you did. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions on that?
So I'm sure that we have addressed this, but it comes to my mind now, who holds the accountability for the money in the library that either is spent or not spent, carried forward, and how much, and...
Who holds the accountability?
Yeah, since the village gives you the money and says, "Now you're responsible for it."
Correct.
My question is, in your organization, well, in the library's organization, who actually is the accountability person who makes sure that that money that's been given is managed properly?
The library board oversees that.
So the chair of the board?
That's part of their responsibility as a whole. They, they're the board of trustees, much like you are a board of trustees.
And are they audited, Nikki?
Our funds are audited as part of the village. The funds are held by the village.
But they won't be held?
No, they're always held by the village.
They're held by the village...
We just don't control them.
They're held by the village, but the library board has the authority to decide how they'll be used.
Okay.
Yes, and, and if for some reason you were to say, "We've gone rogue and are, you know, spending money in imprudent ways," then I would encourage you to respond in budget time.
Yeah, so what, what that means is, as far as accountability, is I see that the library board and the director have the accountability, and if we feel that they're not wise in how they use that money, then we can give them less the next time.
And also, you...
That's what that ties it. I mean, I don't see us ever getting to that point, but that's how that would...
Right.
Absolutely.
I wasn't sure whether the audit would stop, as far as the...
Nope. It's not really actually any different than what's been going on in the past as far as the control within a budget year.
Because they audit your practices.
They audit all of the village's practices, including ours.
I think that's Jeff's question right there, is who's in charge of the accountability board?
Yeah.
And the audit, the annual audit checks that. Yeah. And then the other question that I have, in addition to what you're saying, you summed it up nicely, thank you, is how do you get a seat? Say somebody's interested in being on the library board, how does a person get a seat on the library board?
Yeah. Well, they apply, and the president statin appoints them, as he sees fit.
Yeah. I make a recommendation, the board approves that, which we did about a month ago, for a new person. We had two really strong candidates, and I interviewed both of them. Usually, there's one for these positions. There were two, so I interviewed them and selected one, and they were both strong. I asked the person to be sure and keep their name out in front of us for positions, either on library board or other places, and that's how that got filled. We voted on that.
And are there term limits? Or are they voted for until they resign, or...
There are limits and reappointments. So our organizational meeting after, on the third Tuesday of April, is when we have that whole list of committees, and we, you confirm appointments again. I bring those forward, so that's where that ties together.
Do I think I'm for two years?
I think it's a three-year term.
It's two years, isn't it?
Two or three.
It depends. So most, so we have, like any organization, there are bylaws, and those are available on the library's website under library board. The regular term for everyone is three years, and it's staggered. However, it can be shorter if it is a village appointee. So if someone from this board is appointed, it may be a shorter amount of time.
Yeah. Yeah, we appoint a trustee every year to the library board. That's been Darlene for several years now.
I see.
Yeah. And that's how that works for most of our boards and commissions and so on. Anything else on this? Anything else, Nikki?
Thank you.
Thank you. So that takes us to item 8B, Discussion Possible Action Regarding Purchase of Tasers. The recommended motion is to approve the village president signing quotation from TASER for the purchase of tasers for the police department. The amount, $15,949.96, to be paid over five years. So do we have a motion?
I'll make it.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion second, chief.
I don't want to rehash anymore that's in the email. You know, it's a program that TASERS come out with called TASER 60 that allows us to purchase all of our needed tasers at once instead of buying about five every year. We have several tasers that are out of warranty right now, and they basically allow us $100 trade-in for those. We just have to destroy them. They don't want them back. And so it actually saves us over $2,600 over the whole process. And actually, if you count in the training cartridges that we get, it's probably another $1,000 that it's saving us as well. So it seems to be a pretty financially responsible thing for us to do.
Okay.
So how will, since you were planning on spending the $18,000 over the course of five years, you're going to feather that in, right? How will you pay for the $15,000 all upfront?
It's not upfront. It's over five years we pay.
Oh, I see.
So we're paying like $2,300 this year and $3,100 next year and so on.
I see. So it's going to feather in anyway?
Yeah.
It's not going to affect your budget at all?
Correct. It's actually brought it down every year, so...
Yeah, it's good.
Chief, do these tasers offer any options that the old ones do not? Do they charge quicker, or...
No, they're just more reliable.
More reliable?
Yeah. Maybe we could go all out and get some that have, you know, they shoot two cartridges at once if we needed to, because sometimes you miss, but those are more expensive. And we just don't have that many deployments, so it's not really necessary.
Yeah.
As long as you're good with these, all the questions I have.
Anything else?
So the deployment stays the same approximately?
The deployment, what do you mean by the deployment?
The way you use the tasers, each officer would have a...
Yeah, exactly, stays the same. Everyone would just have a new TASER now instead of some of us using the old ones.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? So we have a motion second to approve the village president signing a quotation from TASER, the purchase of tasers for the police department, in about $15,949.96 to be paid over five years. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Item C, Discussion Possible Action, Change of Agent, Quick Trip Number 731. Recommended motion, approved Quick Trip 731, change of agent request to Joseph McDonald, and the chief of police has approved the change of agent request. So do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, Discussion Possible Action, Change of Agent, a Quick Trip Number 302. Recommended motion is a Quick Trip 302, change of agent request to Alex Meredith, and the chief of police has approved the change of agent request.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, Discussion Possible Action for Quick Trip Number 372. The recommended motion is at that Quick Trip, the change of agent request to Ashley Black, and this, again, has been approved by Chief Hewell.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Quite a change for a Quick Trip, huh? All three for one time?
They're just moving people around, basically.
Yeah, okay. So item F, Review of Draft Recruitment Schedule for Senior Center Director and Draft Job And that's in the packet for people who are watching, gives description of the position and what the requirements are, and then there's a timeline. I won't read through that whole thing, but basically, it kind of starts February 9th and hope to have that position filled June 26th. So Allison is retiring, and we congratulate her on that. And once again, thank her for her leadership there. Our senior center is widely respected in the county for the quality of care that it has, and we appreciate that, so... Any comments you want to make? You're welcome.
Yeah, I just have a quick question. This is in a draft form.
Yeah.
Will Mike be finalizing things? Or do you make suggestions here? I was just curious, because in the first paragraph, it says functions as a liaison to the community, state, and federal agencies. It should probably say community, comma, county, comma, state, and federal.
Okay.
That should be added, because that's a big part of funding.
Okay. Can you just give Mike an email to know that?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Yeah, you're right. I've signed a lot of county stuff for the senior center, so...
Yes, you have.
If anything else, like I said, it's draft, so if you see anything else, be sure to let Mike know.
Okay.
And do any trustees see anything there that they'd like to... Okay. Thank you. That takes us to item G, Discussion Possible Action, 2016, a Budget Amendment 2. The recommended motion is to approve 2016, a Budget Amendment 2.
So moved. I'll second that.
Thank you. Please, so this is just the normal, get things in the right place, right?
It accomplishes a couple of different things. Back in, I believe it was September of last year, there was the 1.5% increase that was approved by the board. So it's allocating out that, and then they annually, I true-up the public works department between their different areas. So that's what this accomplishes. And then there's a couple of other budget amendments. I think the purchase of the ambulance and the ashtrays that we did, and then Walgreens, the tax refund that we had to pay out this year. Yes, did you have a specific question, or...
No, no, just a little overview of what this is accomplishing.
Oh, okay.
Thanks, Lisa. Anything else? So we have a motion second to approve the 2016 Budget Amendment 2. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item H, Discussion Possible Action, Resolution Number 17-03, which is a 2017 annual fee schedule. Amendment number one, there's a recommended motion to adopt this resolution to amend the fee schedule for the police department fingerprinting service and fireworks permit. I think that fingerprinting is $10 for residents, $15 for non-residents, and the fireworks permit is $25.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item I, Discussion Possible Action, Flatbed Truck Procurement. Recommended motion is to approve the purchase and procurement of two 2017 Ford F-550 flatbed trucks from Kaiser Automotive Group of Madison, the amount of $116,600, with funding from Fund 414, which is capital equipment, and that's broken out for capital equipment, $66,600. That would be the 2017 borrowing. Fund 601, water utility, $25,000. That's 2017 borrowing, and Fund 602, sewer utility, $25,000 paid from utility funds.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Bollig woke up over there. Any comments here, Jeff, or...
That nitro pill kicked in.
Just wanted to show you I was awake.
He missed vouchers, so we were a little worried.
I was awake, I just had no questions. The flatbed trucks are one of our workhorses down there, and the two that we have, if you'll ever see, the two others that we're, the two that we're replacing are definitely in need of replacement. And some of them, their frames are sagging, and they're very, they're old. So we had included this as part of the 2017 budget. We had $130,000 in budget for this expenditure. We got some favorable bids. They're Ford F-550 pickups, and then they kind of outfitted with a bed package, which is a tilting bed package, hydraulically operated, for about $13,000. And so our estimated total is $116,600. Well, we'd like to, we're just bringing this before you now, because we'd like to be able to at least put them on order, depending on when our borrowing comes through. So this, we're going to work with, if approval, work with Lisa, and when we would order these, and when they would be delivered, so that we're making sure that we're not putting ourselves in a financial strait in over.
Are we trading in any vehicles, Jeff?
We will, we will be disposing of two vehicles. Now, whether or not, this did not involve a trade-in, but value out of the ones that we have, I'm very skeptical of how much we would get, $1,000 bucks or something like that.
Any further questions? So we have a motion second to purchase two 2017 Ford F-550 flatbed trucks from Kaiser Automotive Group. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item J, Discussion Possible Action on Variable Frequency Drives for the Wellhouse Booster Pumps. Recommended motion, approve the contract with Altronex Control Systems for installation of variable frequency drives. Further proposal dated January 10, 2017, in the amount of $14,478. Cleaning is from Fund 601, water utility, 2017 borrowing. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Jeff?
Okay, yeah. We've been receiving some phone calls in the last six to eight months of individuals in the high zone pressure, which would include portions of South Main Street up towards the top of the hill, as well as into some of the higher areas of Bergabond, experiencing pressure fluctuations where actually the pressure almost goes at or near zero at points for just a period of time. What we've traced it back to is when our large booster pumps turn on and off. They turn off almost instantaneously. We have a large flow in the system, and it just takes a while. We call it a hydraulic transient as it goes through the system back and forth, and then we see these pressure spikes. So there's two ways you can combat that. One is with a valve that closes real slowly to allow, closes before the pump shuts down. The other one is to put a variable frequency drive on, and what that basically is, is like an accelerator, but it allows you to either start up the pump very slowly or shut it down very slowly over a period of time. We have some really good price here from Altronics, and we had budgeted $15,000 in the budget for this year, and this will take care of both the VFDs in both Well Ford and Well Five House.
Thanks, Jeff. Are there questions? Okay, so we have a motion second to purchase these variable frequency drives. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Item K, Discussion Possible Action, Cable TV Appointment. TV committee appointment. Recommended motion, appoint Andy Wyland to Cable TV Committee for a term ending in 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item L, Discussion of Cable TV Moving to the High School Building, 2017. We have information about how this, they do about 80% of work is with high school activities, and this puts them in a position to better utilize students, train students, that type of thing. It saves them $35,800 over the first three years of this situation, and looks like they've met and have details pretty well worked out. Any comments from staff on this?
Any savings to the village on this move, since we...
I don't know how that works.
Not really. I, we're still, I think we're still committed to pay our, I think it's $112,000 that we paid towards the cable TV. So unless there's some kind of adjustment that's going to be done in the future budgets, otherwise it won't make any budget difference for the village.
Okay, would you check with Mike on that first off?
Well, I guess it would probably be a board decision of when we go to do the budgets in 2018, if they want to lower the amount that we're going to be supporting them with.
Okay. Yeah, I think we should look into it. I don't think we just hand them another $36,000.
With no strings attached.
So what happens is, is that the, so I'm a little intimately involved, being that I'm the village's representative on the Cable Access Committee. So when the, when the committee came to the board this last time, they came with a request that was almost beyond what the village gets from Charter. And the board, as a stopgap, said, you need to get your house in order, you need to get your finances in order, and we'll revisit this. I think it was in six months that we would come back and revisit how much money the village is going to give Cable Access to continue. So one of the things that Cable Access has been able to do in the short run, besides taking a look at staffing and how we're paying staff and how many hours we're utilizing, is take a look at other expenses. And one of those other expenses is the rent. And with this agreement that we have in place now with the school, the rent is not eliminated, it's going to be reduced, and I'm not sure by how much. So to the extent that the Cable Access is able to work more efficiently, I think there's a few things in-house that the Cable Access Commission wants to do, like build a cash reserve for the replacement of the equipment, which depreciates quickly, you can imagine, video equipment, computer equipment, and things like that, pretty much is the, that's the workhorse of the entire organization. So partly, it's to build a reserve so that the commission doesn't have to come back to the board when it needs new cameras. It's actually got that money set aside. But then part of it is going to be for the board to take a look at the budget and decide how much money the board wants to pass on to the Cable Access Committee versus hold and reserve for whatever other purposes, and Matt might know what those could be. Once Charter gives us the money, what other purposes would the village have for the money besides funding the Cable Access station?
I don't know if we have the discretion to spend that out, whatever we want, or if we need to dedicate.
It's restricted.
I'm not certain. We'd have to check into that.
So those are things we would need to think through and be ready to discuss.
Yeah, and we're not looking at, well, here's $36,000 we can grab. It's just to be sure those dollars are used wisely and where they get appropriated, so...
Exactly right. Yeah, and it's my responsibility, I think, to be accountable to the board to some extent. And when it comes to budgets and audit all the budgets and things of that nature, those are all discussions that I've had with Mike. I think it's important that the budget be laid out in front of everybody. I think it's important that the finances of the commission be audited, like they are in every other, in every other group that the, that the board associates with.
Yeah, we've done that in the past, so gotta catch up on things.
Lisa, is the cable organization, is that audited as part of the village audit?
Not, not what they do with the funds that we give them. That has not been audited to my knowledge. We do have money in the budget to do that this year to see what they've been spending their money on and...
Right.
I mean, you know, they give us their reports, but I don't know what kind of program that's coming out of, if it's just a spreadsheet where they track it or if it's an actual accounting program where they, the balances are held. I don't know.
And so to add to what you're saying, because I do think part of it is accountability, part of it too is feedback. An audit is a really excellent opportunity for any organization to get feedback on best practices because auditors typically look at the same functions in different municipalities or different industries. And so I have some really good ideas about, you know, your percentage of expense in this area is over, under, or what are you doing about this? It's a, it's a good sounding board to help govern and that's something we've been missing and I think we're looking forward to getting it.
Good. Yeah, thanks, Jeff.
The only comment I would make, I think it's a great idea for the cable TV to move to the high school because they're doing a lot of training over there and I think that's in, with all their sports events and that, that they have a lot of the young guys and girls, I'm sure, that are doing it. I think that's a great experience for all of them.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, we'll go on to item M. This is a Lincoln Road study proposal and recommendation. There's a recommended motion to approve the task order and scope of services dated January twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen for the Lincoln Road Study to be completed by Rooker Milky. The amount is seventy-five hundred dollars. The funding is from the street improvement fund balance and this, like the sidewalks, came to us from some residents about concern for mostly biking but also walking out there by Lincoln Road, so.
I'll make that motion for discussion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Go ahead.
Second.
Okay. Tom, are you sharing in any of this?
I don't agree.
Town, that's not really been anything...
We didn't talk about this on this study.
Right. No, that's not been part of this discussion yet. I mean, the town's been involved, but only from this standpoint. I think it was at the last meeting when Wayne mentioned the possibility of looking at some form of modification to the road maintenance agreement.
Right. Because I know we have an agreement. Don't they have control? It's a crazy agreement, but it's, it's the south side of Lincoln Road, right?
No, it's, it's, it's Lincoln Road from Union to Fish Hatchery. We are responsible for the maintenance of the roadway. The ownership, the legal ownership of the roadway is the, is for us, is the north half from Union to just beyond where Red Hill will come out. Then it transfers to where we own the full roadway from there up until Bergamot, I believe. And then town owns a hundred percent from that on, point on. It's, it's definitely a, it's different.
Right.
Unique. Interesting, as I've heard people say. You know, I think right now we're looking kind of beyond some of, some of that behind and the background kind of discussion over who's going to maintain what. And I think that's, that'll continue to be visited with staff and with the town. This is more or less, kind of came out of the last meeting we had where I think the discussion was, you know, we need to be looking at what are some of the costs. And so what I wrote into this for the scope was, you know, looking at sidewalk options, looking at roadway reconstruction options. I believe it was Wayne at the time had suggested that you could come along and just grade in a shoulder for X amount of dollars. So, you know, we wanted to be able to back that up with some sort of engineering feasibility analysis level to evaluate really if that's possible. This is just the next step in determining what, if any, things will happen or can be done. Included in this also is the thought of a possible off-street path that would be along the north side of Lincoln Road connecting Bergamot Boulevard down to that leeward, inward kind of subdivision area. I will say, and I didn't say it publicly here, but Rooker Milky did a nice job with the two sidewalk studies out. They were very thorough and complete and, you know, I think their prices in line with, this is a little more detailed study, but still really about, I figured it would be in the neighborhood of, you know, six to nine thousand dollars and it came in pretty much right where we are there. But, and I would expect, expect we'd get a very similar type report for this.
So, and here is a road where we have had a fatality in the recent, in the recent history. So this is, this is not, this is not a prospective safety issue, this is a known safety issue.
Yeah, well, and I kind of, in my memo to the board last time, I said, you know, that there's kind of extenuating circumstances that that was with that accident, that it was not necessarily directly a result of an unsafe road condition.
Yeah, without splitting hairs, right?
Right.
Because I've read the, I've read the article too.
Yeah.
But the fact is somebody died on this road and...
There's, there was a recent...
And so it needs to be addressed to somebody.
Fatality with a bicycle stall log. And that was on the western end of the project.
And then the second thing that I wanted to mention is this might be another opportunity for Phil from, from Netherwood if we decide to extend the shoulder.
Yes, could be.
So, so you see how quickly we're getting, we're getting that Netherwood soil gone for you with projects around town? And I just want, I just want to make that comment that, you know, as long as we know what we have to work with, I can find places for you to put that dirt.
Do you want me to tell you where to put it?
I'd say that his driveway would be good.
Yes, yes. No, actually, in this situation, Jeff, for roadway, we would want a very select field, select granular backfield for roadway because that's kind of the stuff we're pulling out of some of our roadways that were like Jefferson and South Main Street. Seems how we're really looking at it as a foundation base, but yeah, there are areas that we can be using topsoil addressing and that type of stuff.
Or if you decided to go, because this, if I remember right, this whole stretch of road is fairly uneven in terms of the grade.
Correct.
If you decided to elevate some of the grade because you decided to do a pathway...
Correct.
As opposed to, I'm not suggesting that you would use that dirt to underbet a roadway, but when you start to get into the shoulder and off the shoulder underneath the sidewalk or underneath the pedestrian area...
Correct.
There might be an opportunity to level off some of that.
And we'll always, yeah.
So everything, you don't got to be in your granny gear half the time.
Yes, I agree.
Anything else on this motion? So we have the motion second to approve the task order scope of services for the Lincoln Road Study to be completed by Rooker Milky. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item M, discussion of possible action regarding MS two thousand seventeen bike tour. Recommended motion is to approve the village president signing the letter authorizing the bike tour route in the Village of Oregon.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. So my question, Jeff, is this the one we had a mess with last year?
No, this is not. This, that was the Milkman Triathlon that came through Village. This actually, this is one that's come through the village for quite a few years. I think they call it the best damn bike tour and it's a two-day event. This actually would come up Union Road, go over, let's see, I'm trying to get my bearings here. It would come up Union Road, kind of go over actually to Main Street and, actually, yeah, I'm sorry, go over South Prairie Parkway, cross, cross over Janesville and then go up Park Street, Oak, and then eventually to Netherwood, Netherwood West to Sand Hill and then north. So it has a little different, it has a different, little different route. Plus, this is a bike tour, which is a completely different animal than a bike race and, or like a triathlon where you have a large slug of, you got your first leaders go through and then you have this large slug of middle, which is just packed. And then you have the slower ones, you know, towards the end. This is much more of a bike ride and so you might have, you have large gaps and, and it's not considered a closed course. It's completely open, so they're asked to still obey all the roadway, stop signs, everything like that.
Yeah. I just know last year at that one event and it affected the Lutheran Church, the Catholic Church, the Methodist Church, people couldn't get to services.
Right.
Some missed them completely. Some were delayed, so.
Right.
We would like to avoid that happening again.
I would agree.
Because I did hear about that.
Yes.
I just have a question.
Yeah.
Jeff, when I look at the route, it still looks like it's, it looks like it's going right through downtown, like the downtown stoplights that got Walgreens? Or am I not looking at them right?
Um, I think you're right.
You're right.
So I'm concerned about that intersection. Will they, will they have to stop at the stoplights or will we have...
At downtown?
Mm-hmm.
No, it actually, it comes up Lincoln Road.
Mm-hmm.
And then you see where it crosses right where actually the South Prairie Parkway, that east-west route right there is, right at South Prairie Parkway. It goes all the way down to where it crosses Janesville Street to where it hits the, right just before you get to the, it goes up Park Street, turns left.
Oh, you must have a different map because my map's not nearly that, that detailed.
Mine's not that detailed. You're, I just, I just know about where it's at. I mean...